Well, welcome. We're right in the middle of the silly season. For many people, they don't understand. Kevin Rudin was about the only one that ever looked it up and found out that that's meant to be a compliment. But it's a critical time in Milford. It's when we really take a look at a number of people, and this year, there's a plethora of people who've gotten up and said, "Not only do I think things should be better in the school department, but I'm willing to help." So our hat should be tipped to all seven people who have stood up and said, "I'm willing to help the kids in Milford." And tonight, we're going to talk to one of them. So why don't we start with an introduction?
Sure. My name is Glenn Wyke. I'm a Milford resident for 22 years. My wife and I got married and then built our home here in Milford. Originally, I started off as a software developer. I did that for about 18 years with a lot of companies in the area. I started my own business in 2004, 2005, doing IT consulting. So I'm still doing that, about 12 years now.
Well, what brought you to Milford? You could have lived anywhere up and down 495, it sounds like.
Sure. And so we're working with a real estate agent. A company moved us up here, and we were looking for a place on 495 somewhere. And there was just something about Milford that we were really attracted to. I know I actually found the listing for the development that we ended up building in. It reminded me an awful lot of the place I grew up, in the Nogaduck Valley in Connecticut. And so it was a natural fit, and we've been really happy in Milford.
And I always start every show, and I end every show, with one basic question. "I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?"
Sure. So I feel that my technical background provides a unique perspective for the school committee. I know that we're starting to adopt more technology in the classroom, most notably the Chromebook program and using Google Classroom. And that program will be expanding more and more as the time goes on. And so my technical experience provides the school committee with a different perspective, really. I've worked on a lot of technology projects before, and so I have a perspective of technology that's been implemented well and technology that hasn't been implemented so well. And so in that way, I can help out the committee and people like Matt Joseph, who are running that program, the Chromebook program, and just providing a different perspective. I can also be an advocate for programming languages, not necessarily to have the kids go into STEM and become programmers, but to teach them logic and critical thinking and problem solving. And so I found that learning programming was very rewarding for me. And one of my favorite parts of being a software developer and a team leader was helping younger developers learn how to program and how to break problems down into their smallest parts. And I feel that that would be a rewarding thing for kids to learn as well.
When we look at Milford, you want to be on the school committee, you want to help our kids. What do you think the three biggest challenges the schools face in the future will be?
So from my perspective, I think a lot of what I see as the biggest problems are things of perception, you know? People know about the things like the MCAS scores or the school choice numbers. And so I see from that perspective, as someone who cares a lot about Milford and the future of the school system, I'd like to see us focus on those problems and solve them. And I know that the administration is working on the MCAS issue. They've had some pilot programs as far as working with some students who've had some issues in certain areas, and they've had some success. So they're looking to expand those programs, and I think that's great. And then the other area would be school choice. And to some degree, I think we do have a perception problem in Milford. And so one way to get around that is to put out more information about the schools, the programs, the kinds of things we're trying to do here in Milford. And I think for prospective parents and students who are going to enter, you know, a schooling age, that they would benefit from that information. And hopefully, they'll be picking Milford schools in the future rather than possibly placing out. Then the third issue I see is poverty. You know, we've got a growing number of kids in the town who are economically disadvantaged. And I think this is kind of true all over Massachusetts. So I'd like to see us provide some programs that would help the disadvantaged kids out. They have very specific challenges. Both parents working, often multiple jobs, and so therefore, they don't get a lot of the mentoring or help with studies that other kids might get. They also have an issue where a lot of them are growing up in smaller apartments, and they don't have a consistent study space where they can just sit down and do their homework. So I think these are the kinds of things we should really be focusing on. I know we have a good food programming program in town for kids who are, you know, food insecure. And so we're doing some things already and doing them well. We should look at some other things that maybe would help those kids out.
Can't get better than Mama Carla's meals.
Of course.
I mean, anybody who knows the Oliva family knows that if there's anybody that can make incredible food, that's going to be Carla.
Mm-hmm.
But now, when you talk about dealing with some of the socioeconomic issues, how does a school do that?
Well...
I mean, I love the idea.
Right.
I love world peace, but...
We're not going to solve poverty in the school committee, obviously, or in the school system. But what we need to try to do is to provide an environment for the kids who are probably under a lot of home stress, have a lot of anxiety, and have very specific issues around the ability to get their work done that a lot of other kids don't have. And so if we can create the right environment for those kids, then a safe place for them where they can just focus on studies and not worry about all the things that are going on at home, I think that would be a successful thing for us to do.
Are we doing enough for those kids? I mean, I think about years ago, Sue Edmonds at the library came to us and said, "Look, I've got a real problem." Because about 2:30 in the afternoon, Stacy empties out, and all these kids run into the library with all these little smartphones and tablets, and my bandwidth goes down to one electron a minute running through a wire.
Right.
So we increased the bandwidth, you know, and the infrastructure at the library. We increased the youth center, you know, what's available down there as far as infrastructure.
Right.
I would think that that's targeted at a lot of the kids you're mentioning.
Right.
Is that enough?
I'm not sure. And I think that there is still a barrier there for kids who are not close to the youth center. They would need transportation down there, and I understand that that's kind of an issue that we're looking at. And so we need to take a more holistic view on how we're going to deal with these problems.
But is it done in the school system? Or do you...
I think, you know, whether it's done purely in the school system or done in a holistic way with other partners, that's open for debate. But I think it's a conversation we need to have, just to determine whether we're doing enough right now.
Now, I'll put you on the spot. Are kids getting a good education in Milford?
I think they are, absolutely.
And what would make you say that?
I think we have a lot of kids who are going on to college, that are going to Harvard and Yale, and they're valued outside of the school system. So that tells me that we're doing something right. If we didn't have a lot of kids going to college, then I would be really concerned. But I don't see that as a major issue. We could always have more kids going to college, and that's something we could look at as well. But I think that, I think we are giving a good education, it's just maximizing it for everybody.
And I know that discussions come up, and I'll admit, I'm biased. I really am proud of Milford kids. But to me, the ultimate judge were the colleges, as you mentioned. Because when my daughters graduated, you know, they got into any college they applied to.
Right.
That tells me that, you know, you can say Milford's good, bad, or indifferent, but some of these top colleges didn't think we were too bad in our education because they accepted our kids.
That's right. And like I said, for some people, there is a perception problem about Milford, and these are the kinds of things that we should be bringing to their attention.
And you know, realistically, it's not just getting the kids into these schools. You know, I joke because my oldest daughter screwed up her junior year. She got a B+. Yeah, that was a bad semester. She got a 3.95.
Wow.
You know, so we kept asking, "Were we partying too much? You know, a 3.95?" Of course, she's smart enough that she went and pulled my transcripts and said, "Hey, Dad, I don't see 4.0s across the border at Holy Cross." And I was like, "Okay, I can't make fun of her anymore for having a B+."
Right.
But you know, that told me that not only did she get accepted to schools, Milford High had prepared her properly, because otherwise, she wouldn't have been able to compete.
That's right.
Now, there is a perception that nobody wants to talk about publicly, that we have all the, them, their foreigners coming in here, and they're hurting the educational opportunity for my child. True or false?
I disagree. You know, I know that they present some challenges to the school system in making sure that they're getting a proper education and transitioning them into English language studies. But it also is a great opportunity. These kids have different cultures, and so it provides an opportunity for the other students to learn more about places outside of the United States, you know? I know that there's a lot of economic instability in the world right now. If you look at places like Brazil, they deposed one of their presidents, and the other one is doing some really troubling things. And so it's not surprising that we have an influx of Portuguese-speaking people in town. It's just a natural occurrence. And so the US, even though we have some instability here, I still think we're kind of the bedrock for the world as far as providing that stability elsewhere. So we're the lifeline for a lot of people, and so we ought to be as welcoming as we can.
Now, we've talked with other candidates about the fact that, let's face it, we're all a little biased. I know I had the most beautiful, most intelligent, most everything daughters in the world because they were mine. And parents worry, because I've heard it voiced over and over, that, okay, with the influx of kids who need extra help, the teachers are going to drop the standard because they're teaching, you know, it's a drive to mediocrity. Do you believe that?
No. I think that the issue, I think more, is that we ought to concern ourselves with whether the kids who are being thrust in this situation are being put in the best possible situation to learn. And I know that we used to handle things a little bit differently years ago, where kids were segregated off for some time period, and they got to learn the basics in math and science and whatnot in their own language. And so maybe as we get more kids in town who are not English speakers, that maybe we ought to consider something like that. I know we've integrated the classrooms, and to some degree, that's been successful and some degrees, maybe not so successful. And so maybe until kids learn the basics and they have a better grip on English, maybe they're better off learning in their own native language. And to some degree, I guess that would solve that problem, if there is a problem.
But what would be the goal, then? If you took the kids, and you took even the Brazilians who almost speak Portuguese, I have a small prejudice because some of them I can't understand. The people from the north are very clear, "That's Portuguese." And then you get other areas that, it's a much prettier language than Portuguese, but I can't figure it out sometimes. But realistically, you bring kids in. I mean, my cousin, when he came from Portugal, they put him in the third grade, and within four years, he was back in the ninth grade, or within two years, I mean, he was back in the ninth grade. Because it wasn't his academic ability, it was the fact he didn't understand this funny new language called English.
Right.
And, you know, a lot of us, I mean, I remember, I wasn't the only one out of the Heights that came out of our house, went to play with the kids outside and said, "What the heck are they speaking? What is this funny language coming from their lips?" And we didn't understand that not everybody spoke Portuguese at home.
Right.
But it seemed like the kids were a lot more resilient than the parents.
I think it's pretty true that when you get a group of kids together and you throw a ball in the middle of the group, they'll find a way to play together, and it's not a big deal. I think you're right, probably, that most of the issues are with the parents than the kids.
Well, I mean, I always laugh because I grew up in the Heights, and of course, we had a natural rivalry towards the kids in Lubieav. We both had a natural rivalry to the kids in the Plains. So when we were at school, you know, Lubieav kids, not as good as the Heights kids and everything. But yet, what I call the great uniter was Water Street, because on Wednesday nights, we went to the Hope Dale Band Concert. And when we got to the top of Water Street and now entered Hope Dale, you took your hat, you turned it around, and I knew that if any Hope Dale kid messed with me, my brother from Lubieav knew I was a Milford kid, they would stand up for me, just like we would stand up for them because they were Milford kids, they bled Milford red.
Sure.
Of course, when we got back over the hills, "Get back! We're in the Heights now, go away!"
Yep.
But that natural cohesion seemed to come about. Do you think it's changed at all?
Hard for me to say. You know, times change. A lot of the way we live and play together for kids, it's vastly different. So I would expect that there are a lot of changes there, kids with their smartphones and social media and all the other things, you know, games and game consoles and things like that. The way people play together and hang out together has changed a lot.
And that's something that keeps coming up. You know, when we were kids, the worst thing you could do is call my parents. You know, "If I screwed up in school, do what you want." I can no longer say, "Beat me," because then people would say, "Oh, that's not politically correct." And nobody ever beat kids in school. But you know, it's like, "Do what you have to just..."
Not beat-beat anyway.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
I got yelled at because I did less than intelligent things. Okay, hurt my feelings, but that was okay. Just don't call my parents. Don't tell my father I embarrassed the family, because it was pretty clear back then that the teachers in Milford's job was to educate me, not to raise me.
Right.
But I feel like some of that is changing. Do you feel it, or do you believe it, or is it over-exaggerated?
No, I believe that there's a fair amount of that going on, sure. I think with parents both working, and as I was talking about before, especially the kids who are economically disadvantaged, the parents working multiple jobs often, there just isn't, there isn't as much parenting going on at home as there might have been before. And so, you know, I wouldn't want the classroom to be more like daycare versus actually an educational environment. But there are a lot of issues that bleed over from home into the classroom now that maybe we didn't have to worry about so much when we were growing up.
But what can you do? Do you have any ideas?
Well, I already mentioned the food program, and I think that's, you know, there are a lot of kids who come to school hungry. I mean, it's tragic. I have, I have one, one of my customers, her daughter works in child services and does counseling, and she was telling me about, especially during the cold snap that we had, parents in some cases couldn't send their kids to school because they couldn't afford the winter coats or the hats or the gloves to allow them to get to school. Another one sent their kids to school with toilet paper wrapped around their hands because that's all they had for gloves. I mean, it's really shocking.
This is Milford?
This was not Milford. But it is a town in Massachusetts.
Oh, okay. God almighty, because you know, I think about it, and I wouldn't want to think that any kid in Milford would be denied education over a coat.
Yeah.
Over a pair of gloves.
Yeah.
God help us if we can't help families. I mean, every year, St. Mary, in my church, St. Mary's, they have the giving tree, and it breaks your heart to think that these kids are asking for such unreasonable things as, one year, a child wanted a book.
Right.
Because he couldn't get to the library when it was too cold.
Right.
Another year, somebody asked for a new coat. It's like, how can you not want to help those kids?
I know. It's just one tough luck story after another, you hear, you know? And it's really shocking, but there is a lot of economic distress in this country right now. There was a report that came out, I want to say about two months ago, that said 60% of Americans can't afford a $500 emergency, like they would have to borrow it from a relative or some other way of affording this emergency. And you think about people living, you know, so many people living kind of paycheck to paycheck, it's really kind of scary what's going on out there. And I know that there are a lot of lower-wage jobs now, people working more in retail, which pays less, versus the union jobs that we used to have in abundance, you know, like the bottling plant that is going to be closing at the end of the month. You know, it makes you worry about how we're going to keep creating economic opportunities for people in this country, and especially in Milford. I wish there were a way we could keep that bottling plant open, but it's just a sign of the times, really.
Yeah, when you start thinking about the changes, I mean, the whole Heights was built because of one company, Draper's, you know, over in Hope Dale, where they needed employees. You know, at that point, it was unbelievable how many people they put up, and they built the Heights. Of course, I always laugh because if they ever did what they did today, they'd probably all be arrested. Because they set up the Heights, the row, the townhouses, or whatever you want to call them.
Yep.
Condos. And they said, "Okay, from number one to number 30, you have to be Portuguese to live in it. From 31 to 60, you have to be Italian." And they had six ethnic groups. Can you imagine you wanting to buy a home, and somebody saying, "I'm sorry, you're Italian, you can't live there"?
That is unusual.
Now, it would, I mean, they'd be in court, they'd be arrested, they'd be maligned.
For sure.
But the management there was trying to take a group of legal immigrants and make it a little easier for them. I mean, every year in the Heights, we celebrate by electing a mayor from one of the six main food groups and celebrating diversity.
Right.
I mean, as kids, we never knew what diversity was. We were too busy living it in the Heights to understand that, "Hey, this is a cool thing."
Right.
But a lot of people worry, and they say, "Well, maybe the diversity in Milford isn't a good thing." What would you say to that?
I would disagree.
Why?
I think that everybody adds to the mix here in Milford. Immigrants have always been a huge positive for the United States, whether it was the Irish and the Italians who came over, and the teens and the twenties, and every group who's followed them afterwards or before. I mean, they've always provided a huge amount of labor and added to our culture. So we shouldn't, we shouldn't look down on the immigrants. They've always added something to our country, and they've always been a benefit. And, you know, from a purely selfish standpoint, we're going to need more workers as time goes on to pay for our Social Security and our Medicare. And so the more workers we have in the country earning a wage and contributing to those programs, the more secure our programs will be in the future. And it's, to go back to the school committee, you know, we've decided long ago that a part of our bargain was providing school to kids K through 12 for free, no charge other than property taxes or what have you. And so it's all part of the bargain, it's all part of how we do things in this country, that we pay for our kids on one end, and they help us out on the other. And it's that kind of synergy that we need to continue in the United States and in Milford.
Are we funding our schools adequately?
I think we're probably a little bit on the low side, just judging from other communities with similar demographics, just comparing it to, say, Marlboro or Attleboro. I believe we're 500 to a grand per pupil less, if I remember correctly. And we've done, you know, the increases that we've gotten recently have been fairly generous. And so I'm hoping we can continue that in the short term, especially while the economy is good. When the economy is good, you want to invest as much as possible. And so I'd really, you know, I probably won't get a chance to vote on the budget this time around, which is fine.
Yes, you would.
Will I? Oh, maybe if I'm...
Because you don't turn it in until actually May.
Okay.
You know, it'll be April, May, it'll be almost done, but...
I know it's already in discussion.
Oh, it's in discussion from the day we pass the old one?
Yeah.
It's always a funny thing because I've had so many people come to me and say, "Well, it's so smooth in Milford. School committee and finance committee..." Finance committee, who is finance committee? You know, the most influential, powerless people in town.
Right.
They don't even get to vote. You know, I mean, 15 of us get up, we make our recommendations, and we get to cast one whole vote out of 200-plus.
Right.
It's really a town meeting. What people don't see is, it's already started. I mean, the school committee will, the new members will get to see when the FinCon stands in private and says, "We are broke. We're destitute. We have no money." And the school committee says, "All we need is a $99 billion raise, and we can keep the schools open. Otherwise, the sun won't rise, the moon won't shine."
Of course.
And then somewhere about April, we come to an agreement of what we can do, what we should do. Do you think the budget, I mean, realistically, we have, if you want to call it, five buckets. One bucket is healthcare, and we pay for the teachers' healthcare out of the municipal budget, because that goes up, God help us, it's gone up some years, 8%.
Right.
The second one is, we call it the bonds, but capital buildings, but the mortgages. But the mortgages, I mean, we just built a brand-new elementary school.
Right.
That was close to thirty million dollars.
We have relatively new buildings.
You gotta pay for them. Because, you know, you take out a twenty-year bond or a twenty-year mortgage, you're paying for it.
Yes.
The third part is SPED and ELL. You know, we've always said, okay, we're gonna hold the school committee responsible for the discretionary spending. ELL and SPED, you really, in a way, we don't have a choice because it's mandated by law.
Right, of course.
But on the other hand, I've never worried that town meeting members need Beacon Hill or Capitol Hill to tell us how to take care of our kids. Our town meeting members always have done the right thing in taking care of Milford kids. So it comes down to the capital budget and the discretionary, which we'll yell and scream, it'll start at a request of five, six percent, it'll end up at two point something. Do you think that's the right way to budget or would you have ideas on changing it?
I mean, some of the costs are just fixed costs that we have to pay for, right? It really comes down to what programs we really need in Milford. And I, I think I've outlined a few.
I'm all ears.
So, the, the discussion about the MCAS scores. And, and I'll be perfectly clear, I'm not a big fan of MCAS and, or the whole testing methodology and reliance on testing for grading kids the way that we do. But if we're gonna be judged by the tests, then we have to focus on that to make sure that kids are able to take the test and, and do well on them. And so, the program that was in more of a pilot phase and now is moving to an implementation phase, we should prioritize that to make sure that kids are getting a refresher on all the basics that they'll need to pass the MCAS. So those are the things that I would prioritize.
But do you think people really understand our MCAS? First of all, let, let's put on the table, Milford's score is lower on MCAS than towns around us.
Correct.
People interpret that as an indicator that kids will get a lower level of education. Do you believe that's true?
I, I don't, and I, I think that there's a lot of reasons why the MCAS scores are lower here. And I'm interested to see how these pilot programs, once they're fully implemented, affect that, those scores. Because I, I think that, you know, in, in some areas where, where we've talked about already, where kids are being thrown into a class without fully understanding English and are being taught science or math or what have you, they may not be fully grasping the basics at that particular time. And maybe there's a better way to do it such that they'll, they'll get the basics ingrained earlier on.
Do you believe we really are scoring much lower than towns around us?
Well, I, I think it's a fact that we are. But the question is why? And I, I don't think it has to do necessarily with the education. I think it has to do with what we're teaching and when. And also that, that in the cases where students are scoring somewhat lower, that we, we give them the refresher on the basics that they need to, to do better on those exams.
See, and I think you're on to something because when you say the students who score lower, I remember when my oldest went into eighth grade. Tommy Daverin, who I always admired because he made it clear that, it may be my daughter, but during the day, it's his kids. Middle School East was a fiefdom, not in a negative way. In a very positive way that he really believed that I'm loaning him my children and it's his job to educate them in the best possible way. I walked in one day and said, Tommy, why do your MCAS scores suck? Oh, I knew I was gonna get a reaction. I just knew, you know, it's like, you know, how's that ugly daughter of yours? Okay, forget anything after that sentence.
Right.
And he looked at me, point blank, he says, because you're ignorant. And I said, wonderful, enlighten me. And he showed me the data. He walked, I was on the school council and I had a right to it as a parent, I believe I had a right to it. And he showed me how our top kids, there was a Gaussian curve at the top and a Gaussian curve at the bottom. Our top kids, as he said, he looked me straight in the eye and he said, I'll put my top kids up against any town around here and I won't come up short. But I have a lot more kids who, as you mentioned, are learning the language. So, you know, you don't teach them organic chemistry till they know English.
Right.
But when you average the two, boy, we look a lot worse. You know? But as a parent, I never cared about an average, I cared about how my kid's gonna do.
Of course.
So, you know, I think a lot of it is what you said, the kids who aren't scoring as high, well, you gotta help them grasp the basics before you judge them on a level playing field with kids who have grown up here.
Absolutely.
So then, again, I ask a question, is it really fact or is it an impression that our kids aren't doing as well?
I think it's a little bit of both. I, I think that for the kids who are struggling a little bit, maybe some earlier intervention or refreshers on the basic would alleviate that problem. And perception-wise, I think people only look at the bottom line. They don't look at the kids who are doing really well in the school system. And so they're not getting that message. And I think as a school committee member, that's something I would try to help fix.
Hallelujah. Because I'm proud of our kids. Both the top end and the kids who need help. My daughter happens to be intimately involved in the Best Buddies, the special needs programs. And she made it clear one day to me that she felt her responsibility was to get every kid to their potential, and maybe a little bit more. But she said, Dad, I have to be realistic that not all my kids have the same potential academically.
Sure.
But I still have to do everything I can to get them as high as they can go. But we can't forget the top ten percent of our kids. Because they're special needs too.
Very true.
Are we addressing them?
In some ways, we are. One thing that I'm really looking forward to is the implementation of the, the college partnership program where kids in, in high school will be able to take some college courses. I think that's gonna be an awesome program. And it'll give kids an opportunity to see what college is like, first of all, from an academic standpoint. But they could possibly earn some credits so that they can, if, if they are taking core courses, they can skip the early courses and go into the meat of the, of the issue in their major.
And you know, back nineteen seventy-three in the fall, three kids were taken out of Milford High three days a week and sent to Franklin. It was scary. Because we had run out of science courses. So, one of the best advocates for children I've ever had the pleasure of knowing was the principal, Paul Raftery. And he took three of us, called over to Dean Junior and enrolled us. And we went to Dean Junior College. Talk about scary, all of a sudden we're with college kids.
Right.
But the, the experience was amazing, really was. And to see that now institutionalized, I feel great about that.
I went to a Catholic school and the Catholic school was located right on a university campus. And so there was a lot of synergy between the, the college and the, and the high school. So we did get some advanced courses in, in my high school, calculus and things like that. Things that I've never used since, of course, but very good courses that prepared me for, for college life. And, and so it was, it was an excellent experience all the way around.
You talk about investing in the kids and we're a little bit shy. Let me ask you about use of profanity in our budget. Words like two and a half override or dead exclusion. How do you feel about those?
Well, I, I'd like to avoid those things as much as possible, let's put it that way.
Well, you can tell how I feel about those words.
Yes. And, you know, we've done a good job at avoiding those things in the past. I think we should continue to avoid those things in the future.
Do you ever see us using them?
I don't know, with our financial position in town, if there is a greater call for more resources or, or eventually we want to change, we want to build a new high school or some such thing, I'm sure that some kind of arrangement can be made where everybody is happy. It always has been in the past.
And we're starting with the high school now. Yeah, it was funny, we just voted. And, you know, everybody credits or blames the FinCon. Again, FinCon can't do anything. And vote one, one vote out of two hundred.
Somebody has to be, appear to be the bad guy, right?
Right, but it's the, it's the town meeting that should always get the credit. Because they're the two hundred-plus people who, on balance, always seem to make the right decision. And we got questioned as to, okay, we just finished Woodland. Why are you putting money away in the stabilization again? My answer was simple, there's a school coming. So what school is it, eight, ten years from now? We're gonna renovate the high school. I really believe it. If we're gonna keep up with times.
Absolutely.
So hopefully, I mean, I felt really proud that we did a sixty million dollar school. That's a scary movie. When we grew up, you could have bought Milford for sixty million and they would have thrown it in Hope Dale, maybe mended on top of it.
Right.
But here's one little building, actually a big building, but, that we paid for and we didn't use profanity. We had already budgeted and were able to absorb it. And I certainly hope, because I would never say never to anything, but I hope that we continue doing what we're doing. And when the high school comes about, we're ready to absorb that. Because I can't see us building a new one, where would you put it?
That's a good question. But, you know, I, I think Milford has always done a good job of planning ahead. And so, that is, that has been crucial to the success of building these buildings and keeping things together without getting it into a tight spot where you have to invoke those other.
Those, those words.
Those unmentionable words.
Now, we talk about educating all the kids. I've been on a soapbox because I've been scared for a number of years that we're ignoring a group of kids. Our VOTEC is Blackstone Valley flagship, absolutely. Dr. Fitzpatrick, when you look at the data, superb what he's doing with the kids. But I worry about people like, you know, make it personal, my father. My father came from Portugal, had four years of education because that's what you got in the villages. Put him in an organic chemistry class, wouldn't do real well, not an academician. Give him a tool, the man was an artist. He could do things with tools that I could never even dream of thinking about. But today, if he wanted to get experience and education in a craft, he couldn't get into Blackstone. Because he'd never scored ten, top ten or fifteen percent academically, it's not what he. What happens to the kids like my dad? Who, they're not dumb, they're really smart kids, they're incredibly talented. You know, the artists, the musicians.
Right.
The craftsmen. What are we gonna do for them?
Well, I understand that there's a cap at the number of kids that we can send to Blackstone Valley. And that's something that maybe we should take a look at addressing. Let's see if we can get that cap raised for those kids. Because learning a trade, for a long time, that was somewhat frowned upon, I guess. At least in some quarters.
Till you need a plumber and you see what they make.
Of course, or an electrician.
An electrician.
And so.
These guys are not making five dollars an hour anymore.
Absolutely not. So, I, I think opening up those opportunities for those kids would be a huge plus. And I know that the cap number is being bandied about a little bit. So I need to find out more about that myself.
How about the programs we're putting in for like hospitality? We got a bank in the middle of Milford High. Which, you know, when you look at the, the Home National, when you look at the Milford Federal, they're always at the forefront of helping. But I was amazed, this is a bank in the middle of the hallway at Milford High to teach kids banking skills. Should we expand programs like that?
I'd like to see kids learn a little bit of everything, a little economics, a little bit of accounting. Any exposure to those topics would be great for them. Just to learn a more balanced view of what's going on out there. I mean, I, I know I didn't get any economics education when I was in high school and I didn't learn any business either. That was, and, and my major was computer science. And basically, all of my electives and all of my primary courses were basically mapped out when I walked into the school. I had like maybe two electives the whole, my whole college career. And so I didn't really get a chance to, to take a lot of those things in college and in high school, definitely not. So any kind of exposure would be a huge help, I think.
It's funny, when I went to Holy Cross, they experimented with doing away with core curricula. So no longer did you have to take three English, two religion, they just meet your major and go figure out whatever else you want to do. And I remember once a year, I'd go over to the dark side of campus and take one of those liberal arts courses. Get scared and run back to the science lab and say, I'll never do that again. I mean, back in the chemistry lab, A plus B equals C. It didn't matter if A came from a depressed environment or B had a bad childhood, they always added up. I got over and started looking at sociology courses and psychology courses where I'd say, where's the answer? Well, there's three or four different answers. Okay, no, A plus B should equal C. I had the hardest time trying to grasp it. But now, I really appreciate the thinking that I was taught. Maybe not the exact examples, but like I took an art appreciation course that I thought I would never, ever benefit from. And then years later, I'm sitting in the Quai d'Arcay and my ten-year-old is giving me a lesson on the Impressionists as we're looking at the Monets and the Manets. And I remembered some of the stuff. So having a broad education really can benefit our kids and teach them life skills.
Yes. And, you know, even just basic checkbook things. Learning how to invest, learning the, the basics of finance, all those things help you immediately once you get into college and beyond. So whatever we can provide to broaden the kids' view, to give them a different perspective in education, you know, I'd love to see all those things.
And make their future a little more secure.
Yes.
Speaking of security, is Milford a safe place to send your kids?
Yes.
Why do you say that?
I, I think in general, we have a very safe town. I, I would say that the schools themselves, they have a lot of security protocols now that certainly you and I didn't have when we were younger. And so I, I think that the, the schools are very safe and I wouldn't want to see us go overboard in, in trying to lock down.
So a bazooka for every child is not something that you would support?
Definitely not, even, even arming teachers, it makes me a little scared. You know, the police and shooting incidents. You know, the police in shooting incidents, and they have supreme training, they go through all kinds of situational use of guns, and their hit rate is twenty-seven percent. So that means seventy-three percent of the time, they're hitting something other than the intended target.
The one they're aiming at?
Yes. Now imagine you're giving a gun to a teacher who does not have that extensive training. I would be really scared as to what could possibly happen. So the other part of it is that the schools, a lot of the schools in recent history who have been attacked had an armed guard, and the armed guard either stayed out of the way or ran the other direction because they were completely overpowered by somebody with an AR-15. And so I don't know that that's even an appropriate response either. Unfortunately, there's no perfect answer, no good answer, right?
But are there steps, I mean, we were at the Best Buddies Dance, and there's a wonderful group of kids all in the cafeteria. And we're looking out at a beautiful view. And I said, "Oh, my God, somebody with one weapon could really cause havoc." Are there intermediate steps we could take, like hardening, you know, places like the cafeteria so somebody couldn't just shoot in and cause havoc? That wouldn't affect, I mean, you know, I joke about a bazooka in every kid. I mean, obviously, that's being a bit facetious, but...
Sure. I think we have to strike the right balance of security and freedom, you know? I wouldn't want it to become like a...
An armed fortress?
A fortress, or a military barracks, or some such thing, you know? We want our kids to be kids, you know? I was reading a story the other day about, it was written by a teacher, and the teacher was saying they just had, and he was a teacher for first graders, and they had armed intruder drills at the school. And during the drill, he had to hold one kid because the kid was shaking uncontrollably. Another kid was, the fake intruder was trying the door to get in, and another kid was hyperventilating on the floor. I just wonder how far is too far with some of these things that we may be, by trying to go through these drills, in some cases, we may be traumatizing our kids as well.
Could you really stop somebody with, you know, a pseudo-M16 and AR-15 or a similar gun?
Likely not. In fact, most of the time when these people are taken down, it's when they run out of ammo. And that's been true in a number of cases. And so when Gabby Giffords, the congresswoman from Arizona, was shot, it was only after the fellow had emptied his clip and was trying to...
Reload?
Reload. And one of the elderly gentlemen who was shot by him jumped on him and took him down. And so I don't even wanna talk about this subject anymore. It's a terrible subject, but, you know...
Let's talk about something a little more near and dear to your heart.
Okay.
Technology.
Sure.
Are you familiar with the Chromebook Initiative?
I am.
What do you think?
I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. I mean, I think it opens up a lot of possibilities, both for the teachers and the students. And I've gone through a bit of Google Classroom, which is what we're using, and...
What is Google Classroom?
It's a tool written by Google that allows the teacher and the students to directly communicate through software and upload lesson plans and use videos and other media to supplement learning. And it just seems like a really cool addition to the classroom, and not to replace the other things that are going on, but as a supplement.
Now, we invested quite a lot of money, in my mind, six hundred grand, to put Chromebooks in every student's hands. Will we get our benefit out of it?
I think so. You know, I think already we've won an award for the work that's already been done. And so I would like to see the program continue and give an eye to other ways we could expand the use of technology as long as it makes sense, you know?
Now, if you had the magic wand and you could add one thing to the school system, any ideas what that would be?
I'd like to expand the civics courses that we have in school. I think there are a lot of citizens out there who don't know how our government works, either don't vote or have lost faith in voting, don't understand that voting is probably the last thing that you do after you do the real work of democracy. And so I would like to see some work done with students to get them to take more interest in it, to show them directly how it affects them, and to show them that it's good to be involved in politics. It's not something that other people do, that it's something that's really important and that everybody should have a hand in.
And we certainly need help, because when we see turnouts of fourteen percent a couple of years ago, twelve percent. A couple of years ago, the school committee was decided by thirteen votes.
Right.
It's amazing how small of a number. Thirteen votes decided who was gonna be intimately involved in six hours of my child's life a day.
Right.
Amazing. Glenn, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Again, I think that my experience in technology and as a small businessman gives me some different perspective that isn't currently on the school committee, specifically around the areas of deploying new technology projects. I think there are ways that I can help there that maybe other school committee members could not. And as we're moving along, possibly implementing more technology, I know questions to ask both the vendors and the people who are trying to roll the technology out that might help make the project more successful.
Well, thank you for offering to help. As always, I'll never ask you to vote for any specific candidate. But we got seven very special people who have all said, "I wanna help the kids in Milford." Get to know all seven, pick three that really represent what you believe. And then I'm gonna beg you, please come out and vote. I mean, we have twelve and fourteen percent turnout, and that's just not the Milford way. Get out, you know, take a few minutes, let people know what you really think. But as always, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight. Thank you for coming on, and thank you for offering to help. Good night, all.